Terry Rose.
Here.
Tammy Garner.
Here.
Janet Andridge.
Here.
First, Nastasia Ruffiano.
Here.
And Robert Thompson.
Here.
Pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas pledge to honor the Texas flag and pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God and indivisible. Rob, can you give us a prayer?
Lord, thank you for the rain we've been getting. Helpful to all of us around the lake and stuff. Bring in some more, please. Thank you for the first responders and all the military folks overseas and around that are watching over us. Thanks for the good turnout tonight. Let's have a nice meeting tonight. Thank you. Have a good day.
I'll put this to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on August the 15th and then to special city council meeting on September the 5th. Approve the minutes for the special council meeting in September the 6th and then the bills for August 2020-30. Anybody have any questions on those, any of that?
I wasn't given this until just now, so I mean, I don't, I, that's why when I emailed regarding this, and it's a lot of information to go through, that's why I was requesting that we reschedule because the dates on here, I mean, there's September 14th.
Okay, so I ask you a question, Nastasia. Do, we are approving these minutes. Do you have any questions on those minutes currently?
What I'm stating is that I didn't get the minutes, so I don't know. So I'm telling that I can't comment.
Anybody else have any other questions or concerns on them than I have? Does anybody have any questions on, we'll start with number one, I guess. So the city council meeting on August 15th. Does anybody have any questions or anything that needs to be updated or changed on that?
I wasn't here for that one, so it sounds like Gump has any question or anything on that one, so good that I'll make the motion and we approve the minutes from the three meetings and the bills of August.
Do I have a second? So I have approval by Rob and second by Jana for the regular meeting, the special meetings, and then the bills. Thank you. Terry Rose. Tammy Garner. Janet Andridge.
Yes.
Nastasia Ruffiano.
I'm not going to vote for the reasons I just gave. I wasn't provided any of this information.
Rob Thompson.
Yes.
Open forum, Betty Whitsky.
It's Whipkey.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. It's hard to read, so sorry.
Okay, in July, I heard this thing up on Facebook. You called me, I talked to you. I took everything you told me at face value. I don't know you. You, I relayed to you that a previous neighbor of mine was elected to city council and stood in my driveway and plotted against Rick South because you had a vendetta against him. You assured me that wasn't the case and that Rick asked you to run. I come to the meeting, I see your demeanor, demeanor in this, these meetings, how you talk to people. David stands up and produces a contract that you signed on your own and another person stands up and said you plotted against Rick South in their driveway. But it didn't all click until you were deceitful about capacity. I understand why David is angry. I'm angry. I cannot believe this. You cannot abuse your power. And if you won't answer to signing a contract without authority to do so, then the council needs to do that. You, I told you, you had to face criticism in an open public forum, but instead you tried to limit the number of people that can come up here to these city council meetings. And people are calling me a troublemaker, but the trouble is right there. I'm just letting them know. But you are the trouble. That's all I got to say.
Jake.
First off, I want to say that this is not a dictatorship. Each of y'all up there are elected officials. City council members, unlike us, do not have to ask permission to speak. You, as a mayor, are not the ultimate authority that can shut down anyone who you want to shut down. They want to speak, they need to be able to speak their piece. Secondly, this meeting is an illegal meeting and should stop right now because on the agenda, which should have scrolled up at the beginning of the meeting, has two different dates on there. It has September 14th for this meeting and it has September 5th. This is a legal document. According to Texas Open Meetings Act, you can't have two different dates and then still have the meeting. Where it says September 5th, it says a regularly scheduled council meeting, which this isn't even a regularly scheduled council meeting. This is a special meeting because the regularly scheduled council meeting is a third Tuesday. If this meeting continues to go on, it is illegal and each one of y'all are noncompliance with the Texas municipal legal law.
Thank you, Jake. So I'll address this. We did send this to several, so our attorney, we sent it to TML, and TML did respond, and we did address it with them. They did see our city council, they said it was fine, so we will proceed with this meeting. Thank you for bringing your concerns.
Will you address my concerns?
I will address your concerns in my mayor minutes.
I consider you a liability city.
Ma'am.
I'm just, that's it.
Ma'am, that's your last warning. Next department reports, water department.
We used eight million, 630,000 gallons of diesel.
I'm supposed to be calling.
Five million, eight hundred and four. Our water loss was approximately 108,000. We flushed somewhere close to 195, or a million 95 gallons because of the burnout. We flushed and we flushed and we flushed. We didn't open planks, which is good. We had 13 connects, 10 disconnects, six were disconnected for non-payment. No rereads, oh, sorry, one reread. We didn't have any flushing requests because we flushed so much. Five line locates, 30 days of meter reading, had three leaks, that's approximately 18,000 to 20,000 gallons lost on that. As far as the road repairs, material has been ordered, the material has been delivered. Oh, we're looking for time now. Maintenance had 14 generated work orders. We've got four lift stations, five lift stations with pump problems, we're working on those. We had no stopped up manholes, water tires are good, two water taps, two sewer taps, and we had a road board.
Thank you, Joe.
So I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm going to leave because I haven't been provided this information, so there's nothing for me to vote on, on this point. And you said you contacted legal or whatever, but I mean, I've taken law classes and you have a date that's a Tuesday. I have another date here, so this is not legal and, you know, from your track record, we really can't trust what you say, so.
Thank you, Nastasia, for your participation.
Two more and there's no more meeting.
Excuse me, David. Carports, we've issued two permits. Accessory buildings, we did one. Single-family dwellings, we did three. Concrete slabbed driveways, we did one. Culverts, we did one, so a total of seven. Licenses, we issued out two. Courts, they did, on the state citations, they did nine. Traffic citations, we had five. Slow case hearings, we had 12. City ordinance citations, we had one. Total cases, they had 27. Warrants issued were 16 and warrants cleared were five. Police department.
We had 39 calls for service, two arrests. The calls for service were four dogs at large, one scam call, two thefts, 11 assists on medical calls, one assist other agency on a cow call, one assist other agency on unattended death, two suspicious circumstances, three car accidents, two fire calls, two welfare concerns, one civil matter, one disturbance, one stranded voter, one suspicious person, one motorist assist, one assault, one authorized use of a motor vehicle, one reckless driver, one criminal mischief, one evading arrest with detention, or detention with vehicle, and 43,672 cars passed to the city from August 1st to August 31st.
Thank you. Fire department.
I would not bring a report.
EDC.
We had a short meeting in August, I mean, in September, I'm sorry, September, to approve our minutes in our treasury report because we wanted to, we also had a special strategic plan workshop that night. So what we had for the treasury report was a beginning balance of, in the money market account, of $12,119.75 and ending balance of $12,150.63. Checking account balance was $25,735.49 with sales tax for both July and August. We had a total checking ending balance of $31,811.86 for a total of money market account and checking account, $43,962.49. We have $1,083 in upcoming debts. One was for EDC training, Priscilla Thompson and Terry Rose. And the AWP traffic comes that we leased for the race last year is just now clearing, so, but it is clearings for a total of $1,083. And the city parks and rec account has had $1.02 in interest, so it's $12,010.84.
Thank you. Spirit.
Trying to think of what's new. We're still taking, selling tickets for the bingo on October 5th, ladies only dinner and a great night. Look online, you'll see it on Spirit of East Tewocanee and some of the other local areas for that to sign up. Also, we're going to, it's been decided, we're going to have a trunk or treat at the fire department on. On October 31st, on that Halloween evening, and it's going to be fun, but just a small version, not been big and crazy like last year was a blast, but we don't have time to do all that this year. And everyone, don't get mad at us, we are going door to door, leaving our newsletter on your door, so please read it and help out the spirit.
Thank you for the trunk or treat. Actually, I've been asked by several citizens if we were going to do it again, and I was not sure.
That's going to be on the 31st, correct?
On the 31st. On the 31st.
Awesome.
I read all of the posts.
Awesome. My thoughts are. Lavery.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Happy birthday. In today's license.
So for the, since the last city council meeting, okay, I can't read it without those. There have been 53 volunteer hours by two regular volunteers, which is myself and H.L. He does the gang gate, and then one drop-in volunteer, which just happens to be really close to me. So that's how it's operated, generally speaking. There were 84 visitors in that timeframe, just a little under a month. Approximately 50 books were donated, they are mostly children, because most of the people coming know that that's been my request, and we are building up our children's book supply. A colored printer was generously donated by Melanie Green and is fungible.
There's the evidence.
An anonymous donor generously donated an eight-by-12 storage shed. Now, why is that so important? Because it is also, it's not just a library, it's a community center. So when we have things like the food drive that we had before Thanksgiving, we collected a lot of food and some of, a great majority of it was nonperishable, but we also live in an area where there is a tornado threat, and so we have to be ready in a moment's notice. There now is a, I had no place to store anything. There's not a closet, a person would be like, oh, there is one closet. It is the emergency battery backup for the lights closet. You are not allowed to block it. When I took over the library, it was very, very well blocked. It isn't anymore. So we have needed a place for storage for a very long time, probably long before I ever got here in this town. And someone, they didn't just donate a storage shed. It is an eight-by-12, brand new, not a speck of rust on it. I mean, it's new storage shed, it's so beautiful. So anyway, whoever did that, if you watch this video, I'm saying thank you. So then it was conveyed to me, we're still waiting for the placard, but I think the fire marshal does that, but I don't know, but the library capacity, which is specifically a library capacity, is set at 32. But that fire marshal was conveyed to me, and then I can read, you know, you can go on the internet and read FEMA requirements and Texas general guidelines, that a storm shelter capacity is simply as many people who will fit. Now, over the course of the last year that I've been volunteering, many people from different walks of life had said, it's right around 125. Well, if you look at the FEMA guidelines and the Texas tornado blah, 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 guidelines, you're supposed to dedicate five square feet per person, which is considered a standing and sitting room. So I did a quick measurement of the library. I didn't count, like, if we were measuring here, I didn't do like, oh, you know, here's a spot. A human could stand here, but I didn't count it. So I didn't count the nooks and crannies because it seemed like splitting hairs. With library, a library setup, i.e. bookcases, the building was designed to have bookcases, but every bookcase takes a square foot off the entire wall. That library still sits at 129 capacity with standing and sitting room. Now, in a horrible emergency, FEMA dedicates three square feet per person, and that is considered standing room only, but when you exceed 200, you must have at least one spot, that is seven square feet dedicated, I guess the general population is one wheelchair person per 200 residents. It must be a thing. So based on that, the capacity is 215. Some may have seen my Facebook post where it said 216, but that literally was three square feet. You have to subtract one to accommodate the wheelchair. So just to share information, because I find that the more information that is shared, the more people understand what is or is not going on. The current record was actually set this last spring when a tornado dropped down on the edge of the water, Lake Tewocanee, and then dropped down in Point and Sulphur Springs and did significant damage to people and their homes and so forth. That broke the previous record. The previous record was 42 people, and this particular record was 48. And we may have had a few more people in there during the spaghetti feed. That can't really happen again. So we're still way under what it could hold, but I do want people to understand and to just clarify to the community that there is not a shortage of space in our storm shelter. I don't want people to be like, well, it's pointless to go there because we won't fit. You absolutely will fit because we've never even come close to standing room only. So please make sure you share with those individuals who do not have a storm shelter. I don't. My house is a, you know, stick house, and it will fly away, so I go to the storm shelter when an event occurs. The other thing, too, is that the library, on behalf of the Spirit of East Tewocanee, continues to collect coats, jackets, items of warmth, so that includes blankets, it could be a scarf, something as simple as those little gloves that only cost like a dollar for kids. They are going to be needed in our community, just not right now. So when those items became available, become available for shopping, which they're not really quite available yet, you can stop by the library anytime, even if we're not in the middle of a coat drive. I will always take gloves because we do have some children in need that come to the library for food.
Thank you.
Regularly. So I just want to throw that out there, there's still, there's still some need in the community.
Thank you. Next is approve or deny a chicken coop and run on 109 Mohawk Trail in Indian Hills. They did provide us, the homeowners did provide us with pictures, and then I also gathered some so that y'all can kind of see the lot layout and everything like that. And if you have any questions for them at all.
Does a chicken coop?
So. And then y'all can see y'all's sound downs, too, about where they want to place it and everything.
It's a nice chicken coop.
That's a chicken coop.
It's not a chicken coop.
That's a lot of chicken.
Does anybody have any questions for them at all or anything like that on this one?
Well, I mean, you know, it's not a safe.
So you're going to totally enclose it with a fence?
Forty-five feet of it.
Right, all the way around the house and?
No, not, no, just from this corner.
At the back.
All the way to the back.
Yeah, there's not.
But we're not going up to the trees.
Right, right up to the road.
And we're going to put a fence at each end.
Yes, I see that.
That's good. How many chickens?
Four.
Just four chickens?
Up to four. I think that they only allow up to six total.
Water tanks like that. Does the council have any questions on that or anything else?
Sorry.
No, you're fine, no, you're fine. I have them to ask you questions.
Can I ask a question real quickly? Is it, do we have to ask for permission to do a chicken coop? Is she asking because it's not fenced in or the, do all chicken coops have to be okay?
You have to get a permit.
You have to have a permit, but I think it's because of where it's sitting.
Yeah, because of the location, because their house is kind of like what ours was, it's a little bit, they're lots different in the size, why they're asking, because their road, they actually have basically a road going one way and a road going the other way. So really and truly, their backyard is completely road surrounded, that's why they're asking.
Okay.
I would like to motion to approve.
In a second.
So I have a motion to approve the chicken coop from Tammy, or Cami and Terry.
Terry made the motion.
I just heard both of y'all up there, I was like, I don't know which ones.
Terry was first, Cami was second. Terry made the motion.
Okay, perfect. Terry Rose.
Yeah.
Tammy Garner.
Yes.
Janet Andridge.
Yes.
Nastasia Ruffiano. And Robert Thompson.
Yes.
And y'all can just permit from the Delaware, and that's the place.
Yeah, y'all can.
I'm having too much fun.
You get free.
I'm gonna go look it up on YouTube.
You've got a whole.
Approve or deny combining lots, 85.
We appreciate y'all.
85, 86, and 87 at 209 Center Drive in Tewocanee Marina Estates.
I'll make the motion to approve combining the lots.
Second. Okay, so I have approval to combine the lots.
Yes.
Rob and Jana second it. Terry Rose.
Yes.
Tammy Garner.
Yes.
Janet Andridge.
Yes.
Nastasia Ruffiano. Robert Thompson.
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. Approve or deny repairing the charger and batteries on the current golf cart that was purchased in 2007, I believe is correct, for the water department or to replace it? And the cost is there, we checked around to get those batteries, we're looking at about $1,018 just for the batteries, and then to do the charger is $352.95. We just jumped online a little bit and caught some golf carts that were cheaper and stuff.
Golf carts about 20 years old.
But having gone through this myself just recently, and mine wasn't, I guess mine was 20 years old. Yeah, you know, my thought is, is you have to replace the batteries every three-ish years at a thousand dollars a pop, and so we went out and bought for our personal use a gas one. And the people I've talked to that have gas ones, they're a little noisier, but the maintenance is a lot less on them, you don't have, you know, you have to change the oil, but other than that, there's really not much to it. So they're a lot easier, cheaper to maintain over the timeframe than the other one is, so.
Yeah, that's what we were kind of looking at, is one, a gas one with like a dump bed in it so they can use it in other capacities besides just.
Are these two here side by side? Are these two pictures here side by side?
No, they're actually just golf carts. I just grabbed up the line, Terry, really quick.
Well, the reason I was asking is because the side by sides are usually heavier duty than what the golf cart is.
And that's what I was thinking, too, but I just grabbed them really quick because it died and I was trying to get y'all something, and y'all packed it from when I did this on Monday, so. It's not, it's a golf cart. I thought it looked like a side by side, too, but it's actually a golf cart.
I mean, our golf cart, either. Right back.
Well, we're looking at a gas one or side, it'll be one.
So you're looking at a gas one?
Yeah.
And what's the cost of a gas one?
Between six and, I said between six and eight thousand is what I put in there.
And newer or used?
It'll be used. It'll have to be used.
No, I, no, I don't know. That's what I was asking.
So I'll make the motion that we go look at finding a gas one. So I'll make the motion that we go look at finding a gas one. I don't know whether these ones you got here are ones you actually are interested in buying or just samples of what's out there.
Correct. Kind of just samples of what's out there.
So I'll make the motion if we go find one and, and I don't know whether we want to approve a certain dollar figure tonight for them to go buy it or whether we want to come back and do the meeting, get it approved, but.
If you approve a dollar, if I'm out of line, tell me, but if you approve a dollar amount, then I know what I have to work with. And.
If I find something, it may be gone by the time we wait a month to come back.
Right, I understand, yeah, so.
Do I have a second?
Oh, are we gonna set amounts?
So I'm finally.
No, I don't want to. Go ahead.
I'm finally setting the dollar amount. That way he's going to offer one, huh?
We're waiting on you. We're waiting on you, Stander.
You were making a motion earlier.
All right, I'll make the motion that we authorize up to seventy-five hundred for them to go buy a new golf cart. That splits the difference between the prices we've got.
That's golf cart or side by side?
It'd be a used.
With a dump.
I'm just gonna, I was just gonna say, so we don't end up limiting them to if they find a side by side, yeah.
Yeah.
They don't have, they don't, they don't have.
Both, well, side by side.
They both have dumps.
Yeah.
No, it has to.
I just don't want it to be specific. Does that make sense?
Yep.
I was on the council when we bought that golf cart and I was the one that recommended it and the reason that we got that was because it's easier for the guys to jump out and read the meters. So if you buy something like a side by side that has doors on it, you're just going back to what the problem was before, which is.
I own a side by side and it has no doors.
If you, I'm just saying, get one without doors because that's what they want is to be able to jump out real quick.
And then have a window in the front, so you got the front too.
They used mine when they read meters.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've seen them. Oh, I've seen the old one.
And I let them use my side by side and it worked real well.
Yeah, I was gonna say, just take it as more golfers. But either one, whichever one they can, can find.
Okay, I'm gonna approve. Approve up to seventy-five hundred for a golf cart or a side by side? Is that the motion I have?
Yep.
Yes, I'll second.
Terry Rose?
Yes.
Kami Garner?
Yes.
Janet Andridge?
Yes.
Nastasia Raffiano? Robert Thompson?
Yes.
Can I make one comment? I just bought a new golf cart from Ford Tractor down here on Interstate thirty and it had a lithium motor in it, I mean, a lithium battery. It was an electric cart and they're guaranteed for like ten to fifteen years and I only paid eight thousand for it and I'm sure that the city could probably get a discount if they would be interested in something like that with a lithium like that or something.
Thank you.
So with that said, when, when we were buying one, we looked at some with the lithium batteries and, and they do last longer than the other batteries do, but they also said it was like three grand to replace them when they needed to replace them too. So it, you know, over the timeframe that they're good for, it's not really saving you, you know, whether you spend a thousand dollars every three years or three thousand dollars every ten years, you know, it's still, the maintenance is still about the same on them.
Next is. Next is to approve or deny signing the Community Internet Providers Contract acknowledgment of changing its name from Community Internet Providers to CIP Broadband LLC.
Make a motion to approve it. They just.
It's just a.
And it has to, and it has to update the contract.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Terry Rose?
Yes, ma'am.
Kami Garner?
Yes.
Janet Andridge?
Yes.
Nastasia Raffiano? Robert Thompson?
Approve or deny signing the contract with Raines County Appraisal District for the Tax Collection and Assessment Services.
Is this something we do annually?
Yeah.
This year different than the past year? All right, I'm making the motion to sign the contract for the, with the Raines County Appraisal District for Tax Collection.
Terry Rose?
Yes, ma'am.
Kami Garner?
Yes.
Janet Andridge?
Yes.
Nastasia Raffiano? And Robert Thompson?
Take action for the City Council to cast a vote for the Raines County Appraisal
I don't know if those of you that are on the council remember, last year we divided it between the three because nobody knew the candidates that were running really. Thank you. I was like, I don't know. And if you'll look at that second or third page, East Tewahqunee is entitled to ninety-eight
For the same ones running? Says they're willing to serve another term.
I'll board, they're willing to serve another term. I mean, it looks like it's the same people. They're just extending. Three people running for secretary. I don't know who the incumbent is.
Let me look at this.
Well, they probably stagger your position.
City of Emory and the Commissioners Court have already gone over this and they, neither one of them has actually voted because there's one spot missing. But they didn't, they never had a, a list of candidates. So that's why I was kind of, I don't know if y'all have a candidate.
Kind of, or special.
The only thing it says is to serve another term, so it's not like we, we have candidates, but we don't have candidates, if that makes sense.
What does it do is an update on what City of Emory and Commissioners Court has done.
So what are they just refusing to vote until they get a proper list?
Yeah, they're, Commissioners brought a candidate to send back to them and of course they will meet in two weeks, so for the end of the month. And City of Emory wanted to know whether candidates would want to be there because they were kind of, who are we going to pick to fill the spot? So they could, but they'll also be back in session before the actual voting takes place. We will too because we've got another meeting scheduled before the end of the month to approve the budget and stuff, so.
We table it till then? I'll make a motion that we table it till the next meeting.
So a question, table it?
Well, next meeting. Motion by Terry, a second from Kami. Terry Rose? Kami Garner?
Yes.
Janet Andridge?
Yes.
Nastasia Raffiano? And Robert Thompson?
Yes.
Take action to repeal the enforcement of the juvenile curfew.
I would just like to say before you voted, the teenager about nine o'clock at night, a couple of miles ago tried to break into TJ's, just watch on.
This was one of the laws that went into effect on September first.
Is it already going to be repealed by the state? Is that what it's called?
Yeah, as of September first, if you read all of this, it states that they're trying to make it where kids under the age of seventeen and lower, but older than ten, won't get a record for these types of curfew situations.
Yeah, violating.
Right, only violation of curfews. If they are doing something that is illegal, they can be brought to court or whatever or, you know.
I was just trying to determine, is this a?
A curfew issue that we cannot set juvenile curfews, for instance, between ten and six AM, Monday through Thursday. And then Saturday and Sunday, it's eleven PM to six AM. But it's only a curfew and the curfew is stated that you would go and say, you have to leave the property and if they don't leave the property, then it kind of becomes an issue. But what I read in the law is you have to ask them to leave or the owner has to ask them to leave and then if they don't leave, then it's an issue, right? So it's just a curfew issue that you cannot take them in for a curfew issue. It has to be more than just.
Right, that's why I'm trying to get at it, it's a state law that we have to follow.
Like I said, you just have to be really careful in understanding the difference of if it's a curfew issue or if they're actually doing something to cause bodily harm or theft or whatever, then it can be taken a step further.
Right.
Yeah, it's just the curfew issue. I mean, it even includes truancy, it's only a five hundred dollar fine now, it's not going on their record and blah, blah, blah. Actually read the whole entire flipping thing.
So what is the place for a sherry man?
That's what I was gonna say, I, I have a question for you regarding this because I mean, it is a law related to only juvenile curfew, whereas like what you were just saying and breaking, trying to break in and enter, that's a different issue and you can at that point cite them, arrest them, and do whatever. So if we're only addressing the juvenile curfew issue and it's a state law, what do you say?
I mean, as long as it doesn't, whatever the current city ordinance is, as long as it doesn't violate that statute, we can keep it.
So it says the hours in the curfew is ten PM on Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday until six AM the following day. Eleven PM until six AM on Fridays and Saturdays is what the current ordinance says.
That aligns with this.
That, that is what it states in the law. Right. That we cannot have the juvenile curfew like that.
Well, I think the, the big issue in that particular subject is the right definition of curfew, it seems to me, because we're talking about it, we're throwing away the word curfew, 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 breaking the law, drinking. They can be drinking in their own home after curfew, but we need to know what curfew stands for as far as juveniles and different ages.
But literally in the law, they have stricken through every word of.
Understood, but I think we need to equip our police officers with the proper definition so they don't run into a problem with a teenager that's probably going to the drugstore for their mom.
Is it a state law on the hours or can we set our own?
Right now in the law, those are the hours that it was.
But there's no curfew now.
And it's saying that you cannot do curfews.
No curfew.
That's what it says.
You can't do curfew in the law.
Those of the city adopt their own curfew law though.
It has to.
I mean.
You have to, you have to line with state law.
That's just it is, we have to align with the state law, but again, it's really the word juvenile curfew because if they are doing something else, then it can be, you know, trespassing, it can be breaking and entering, it can be, you know, so, you know, even like for instance, somebody the other day ended up with a bicycle on their property. Well, that's trespassing. You know, if you saw who the Russian was and if it was a juvenile, well, they trespassed. So it's really the curfew that has changed within the law itself.
To where they're seeing walking down the street, walking from a friend's house back home after eleven o'clock on a Friday night, they don't get in trouble for a curfew violation.
Correct, correct.
Then there wouldn't be a curfew violation more, but if they're walking from their friend's house to their house and then they stop at this neighbor's house and get in the backyard and start looking around, well, then it's trespassing, criminal. And so, yeah, so then they can get in trouble for that.
Let me ask you this, if that's the case after eleven o'clock, how many police officers do we have out there after eleven o'clock at night? Zero.
Well, we have the sheriff's department that comes out if we need them after ten o'clock at night, yeah.
It takes twenty minutes for them to get here.
Or an hour.
How many police officers do we have?
Currently, we have four.
I can believe.
Four full time and two reserve.
Really?
So back to this, do y'all want, what do y'all want to do on stake and action on this? How do we want to?
Is it just repealing the actual curfew times?
Yes.
Or, or the citation for. It's just the.
It's repealing the curfew.
Adopt the city ordinance to get rid of.
The curfew. That's it. Correct. I mean, and I think there's no other option for us except for to.
Repeal it.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
But there's still.
I don't think we have an option here.
Yeah, there's still, the state law is still there and our police officers would go by that state law.
Absolutely. But they have.
If whatever we currently have is going to conflict with that, then you have to get rid of all curfews.
I mean, I make a motion.
So is this like there would be a curfew or there would not be a curfew?
It would not.
There would not be a curfew.
Is this a big problem within the city as of now?
Well, historically, we have had issues of kids, I mean, we have, I mean, trust me.
There's nothing too recent.
Nothing too recent, but I mean, yes, we did have.
What's our population?
Eight thousand fifty, something like that.
Wasn't that a minor that tried to break into TJ's? I think it's pretty recent to have it now.
But at that point, you can arrest them for breaking in and entering.
That's a whole different. It wouldn't even have gone against the curfew if it was nine, at nine, it was still. I think that if children are going to be out, call them a criminal mischief, they're not going to care about the curfew time anyways. Or if they're going to be.
Okay, I have a motion to repeal from Kami, a second by Terry. Terry Rose?
Yes.
Kami Garner?
Yes.
Janet Andridge?
Yes.
Nastasia Raffiano? And Robert Thompson?
Yes.
Review and take action to approve or deny East Tewahqunee's Economic Development Corporation twenty twenty-three budget. I will state that on the economic development side of it, Terry Rose will not be allowed to vote because of conflict of interest.
Correct.
Okay. Did anyone have any questions for Regina? Sorry, I had to look up. Not used to you sitting there, Regina, on this at all?
Yes.
Go for it.
So line item twelve for the bond renewal, it says president and secretary, should that say president and treasurer?
Where, where you at?
Line item twelve?
Line item twelve on the budget that.
In August?
We provide. On the budget itself.
It says what?
It says president slash secretary. Should it say president slash treasurer?
Yes, it should, absolutely it should. Thank you for catching that.
That's right. So, so looking through all your documents, your budget normally runs January through December. So we're approving this budget halfway through the year and we'll get it one for twenty twenty-four sometime soon to approve?
May I explain why it's just now becoming, well, okay, let me just, I assume that someone would ask that question. So this is why all of these documents are coming in now. For the twenty twenty-three budget in December, I started having eye problems. By January, I was legally blind, I was having trouble seeing. I went to an eye specialist. He explained to me that I had an eye disease which would require partial cornea transplants in both eyes. I could not even read the giant E on the, on the, on my optometrist. So I had both of those cornea transplants, and then I had to have a third operation on my right eye because it still wasn't right. And it's still not right, so I have to go get a scolera lens for it. But in March, I was able to see well enough. I was, I was trying to read on the computer with a giant magnifying glass. So anyway, in March, after I had all my surgeries and everything, my eyes started clearing up to the point where I could actually see the computer, and I was up, so two reasons. One, I couldn't see the computer to put a budget together. I had eye surgery after eye surgery after eye surgery. And then, secondly, I was terrified I was gonna go blind. So that was my only concern at that time. If you read through here, the budgets for 2019, 2020, there really was no budget. There was nothing except the road payment that we pay to the city, and that didn't require a budget because it was an agreement that was done between the city and the EDC. So it really wasn't required. However, then in 2020, in August, I broke my back and had to have, I know, I'm a mess, had to have back surgery. And the back surgery showed that I had an incurable cancer, multiple myeloma. Started extremely aggressive chemo for over a year. Very sick, tried to get me on the last stage. Then after that, I had a stem cell transplant, and it was COVID, so I was quarantined because I had my immune system. And now I'm just telling the whole world my story here, but, you know, who cares? All of you know that anyway.
You need a cane.
Anyway, I was quarantined because I had no immune system, and so I couldn't get out, I couldn't go to meetings, I couldn't do anything. And in March, I was released by the doctor. And so then, I started working on everything that I should have been working on for at least the past three or four years, three years anyway. And everything that needed to be done, which was my job to do as president, they're all complete now. I mean, I worked very hard as soon as I got my eyesight back. Still doing chemo every other week, but, yeah, that's better than it was. So, and in summary, I do, I do wanna read this part. The officers, President, Secretary, Treasurer, and Board Directors of the EDC take seriously all of their duties and responsibilities, the most serious of which is financial integrity and fiduciary responsibility. To that end, it should be noted that annual audits by an independent auditor have reviewed all financial records regarding revenue and expenses, including annual sales tax reports, to the State Comp Trollers Office attributed to EDC for each of the past five years and found no irregularities or improprieties resulting in financial harm to the municipality, the EDC, and the citizens of East Tewocany. God bless America.
May I ask incentives? What's included in incentives for the?
The incentives are unknown, but the incentives.
I mean, incentives can be so many different things, so I was like.
So many different things. So one of the things that I had to do was put together an incentive policy and an incentive application, which I have done, and the EDC board has reviewed it. And we still have a little bit more work to do on the policy, and John Dish is actually making it a fillable application, a fillable form, which we can put on the website for people. But you never know who will want an incentive or what they will want.
Right, that's why I was like, oh, incentives.
The last one we had, the only one we've had, was a developer who came in and talked to the EDC about the hotel. He wanted to build a hotel.
So that would have fallen under?
That would have fallen under incentives. And he, after we did, we tried desperately to do due diligence on him, and he just would not cooperate with us. So we recommended to the city and to the sellers of Kenny's Landing to cancel all activity with them.
Right, yeah.
And they did.
Yeah.
So you never know who one's gonna come up, so it's kind of just a pot of money.
It is, okay.
Thank you, Kenny.
Can I ask a question before y'all take the vote? Since Terry can't vote, Natasha shouldn't be included. Her name shouldn't even be included in the voting.
No, it's not, but we have to like, roll call it.
Okay, excuse me.
That's all right, I was like. Any other questions on that budget?
I do, on the software?
Yes, why is it $3,000?
Well, no, not why, where is it, who, I mean, do y'all have an EDC computer that it's on, or is?
We wanted the software to start building automated forms and having a more, what I'll call, up-to-date, upscale version.
Interactive.
Of the interactive, thank you. And we really didn't know what it would be. The one we were looking at was Microsoft 365.
Yeah.
And it is expensive, and we weren't able to provide it. We use the city's IRS tax ID number for sales tax, you know, and they wanted the EDC to have one of their own. And so that's why John is now looking at Google Forms. So 3,000 in there, we were hoping we could use it, and we may still need it because we feel like we can, we can get software that not only the EDC can use, but the city may can use it as well. Yeah.
So that was my question, I mean, if we buy software, what computer are we gonna put it on? So.
Maybe Sheriff's.
Well, yeah, so.
It would be, I don't know, it would be soft, if the EDC body probably go on John Dish's because he's like smart technology-wise, and he would be the one to do that.
So my only concern with that is, I like John, he's nice guy, I'm sure he treats you well, but the problem is, is, you know, there's limited terms for y'all on EDC, so when he goes off to EDC, is that software gonna be transferable to somebody else? Are we gonna have to go buy it again?
No, technically, there are no terms for the EDC as long as City Council continues to approve them. Now, would John stay on there forever? No, of course not, none of us will. But I think it's just something we would have to look at based on what software we buy. If it's a, if it were a really expensive software package, it may be one that we wanna put on one of the city's computers where the EDC would have access to it. Or we could put it on, I don't know, you know.
Yeah.
Just something we'd have to think about.
You don't have to put on a computer.
Have to be contractual, whether or not it was transferable.
Absolutely.
Sometimes they give you a lot more license numbers where you can put in like several computers.
Sure, you have to write. But right now, what we're really looking at is Google Forms because it's free. And the.
So that means that that $3,000 has not been spent then?
None of that, no, not at all.
This is totally a budget going from, till the end of the year.
And this same budget is gonna be the one you're gonna see in January 2024, most likely. The only change may be the software. I know the city doesn't have money for software like that. If the EDC can put it in their budget and it's approved, why not? So that we can collaborate on what we might need to bring us all up to speed on some technology.
How much longer does EDC have to contain the city's?
Two more years.
Two more years.
Two more years, and then that contract will be over. So we'll have a little bit more money for incentives and things like that, yeah.
Did you say the road is, the road payments are over in two years?
For the EDC, yes.
EDC's portion.
The EDC's portion will be over in two years.
That one was the.
Twenty-four and twenty-five, twenty-five is, 2025 is.
Rob, what other questions? Nothing? Do you have a question? Terry, sorry, Terry, sorry, Kami, go down the line.
No, okay. I make a motion that we accept the budget for the EDC.
Thank you. To approve or to second the budget.
I'll have a second.
And Rob, I will make that change from Secretary to Treasurer. Thank you for catching that.
Terry Rose. Sorry, I knew that. Kami Garner.
Yes.
Janet Andridge.
Yes.
Nastasia Raffiano, and Robert Thompson.
Yes.
Next is to review and take action to approve the amendment by the law.
Bylaws.
Bylaws of the East Tewocany EDC.
I'll tell you, y'all are really busy. Because I actually sat down and wrote all this, I was like, whoa.
It took, it took me about three months to actually get just the bylaws and the.
Mark them all up, and then we write them and do the amendments and everything else.
Because you have to go back and look at the law, they've never been changed since, they've never been changed.
Was it 1996 or 1997? Yeah.
So it required a lot of work, but after I did the draft on them, we had a few meetings with the EDC board, and we went through them, and they made some really good suggestions, so.
I spent about two hours trying to go through this this afternoon. And even with your paper that says what you revised, looking at the old and the new, I still have a lot of questions. And so with that said, I think my recommendation would be to table this and have a workshop where we could sit down with the EDC and go through it. And I mean, my concerns are, I don't know, you see just, what is the new 5.8 gifts? I mean, your revision sheet says you expanded the verbiage, and my first comment was, it's new, not expanded. But then later on, I found it further back in the document in a different section. So you moved it from one section to another, and then expanded it.
Right.
So it's just stuff like that, it's real hard for me to, as I'm trying to review it to see what it is, so. I'm not doubting that you did a good job on it or anything, but I think I just would like to sit down with y'all and go through it.
I'm totally good with that, I mean, the bylaws are, it's a lot.
Yeah.
It's a lot to go through, and so I'm fine with that.
And it's just hard to sit there and look at the old and the new, and even with the revision sheet, which is very helpful. I, there's still a lot of stuff that's hard to understand what you moved and where you put it to, and so on and so forth. So I'll make the motion, we table it and schedule a workshop with the EDC sometime to go through this so we can better understand what changes they did make.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Kami Garner.
Yes.
Janet Andridge.
Yes.
Nastasia Raffiano, and Robert Thompson.
Yes.
To review and take actions to approve the amendment articles of the incorporation of the EDC Corporation for East Tewocany.
So my recommendation is, we do that at the same time, go through those.
I'll second that.
All right, I'll officially make the motion then.
I thought I heard you say that.
But. Kinda, sort of, but not really.
Okay, so we're gonna table and include it in the workshop.
Yep.
Robert Thompson made the motion, and Kami Garner seconded. Kami Garner.
Yes.
Janet Andridge.
Yes.
Nastasia Raffiano, and Robert Thompson.
Yeah.
Okay. The next one is to approve or deny appointing the board members of East Tewocany EDC. We are actually gonna break this out because Rob cannot vote on Sheila, but he can vote on everyone else. So pull in Sheila out of it. Rob can vote on Regina as the President, John Dish as Vice President, Tyler as Director, Steve as Director of EDC, and then Terry as EDC Director also. Does anybody have any questions?
There's not a form for that, you pull him out and she's out too.
Let me finish. So on those, we need to approve those, and then we'll have to have this again if we want to, to have Sheila voted in, that we can table it.
I'm fine with voting the other members in, and we'll do.
And table Sheila?
Yeah, and table Sheila and do it. When all three of the other ones are here that they can vote.
So I have you approving appointing everyone else but Sheila to their positions. Is that correct?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
That's why I thought I heard you say, but I wanna make sure I heard that.
Sorta, kinda.
Okay.
I'll second it.
But that last one on the end down there, I'm not too sure.
I know.
We'll let her say it.
So I have a motion to approve everybody for their positions at the EDC except for Sheila. Rob, Kami seconded. And we're tableing Sheila.
Kami Garner.
Yes.
Janet Andridge.
Yes.
Nastasia Raffiano, and Robert Thompson.
Yes.
The next one is to discuss and take actions if necessary, basically to address the city of East Tewocany recording city council meetings and allowing the video by employees and council members. We have discussed this several, with several different attorneys, TML, stuff like, people like that, and we, it's gonna be too costly for the city to take that on because, like we said, we'll have to hire someone to do that because we have to make sure everyone can be heard, everybody on City Council, everybody can be seen. And then also, storage is another issue. I did wanna bring this in front of City Council because it did get brought up several times by citizens and a council member. And that's why this has been put on the agenda either to approve or deny it for possible, for actual recording these.
Clarify, what are you talking about?
To recording, like they're doing over here.
Like they're doing, you don't want them to record?
It's not, they record, that's totally different.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
So what we would have to do is, I'd have to purchase a mic for each one of these, and then we'd have to have somebody be able to pan around and make sure that the audience is caught when you're talking, they have to pan to you.
Okay.
I think what the city was in control of.
Yeah, the city has to be in control. Because like, they're recording, they can cut and paste, move stuff around. Not that they would, I'm just saying they could. We don't want that, we actually have to have the whole meeting recorded.
Are you allowing them to record?
They're fine, they're fine, that's why they're over there.
It's just saying the city won't be responsible for doing it.
Yeah. Do I have a motion on this, guys?
I'll make the motion that we do not record.
A second.
Do not record, what about video conferencing?
All of the video conferencing.
Tim Ellis.
Yeah. So I have a motion that we do not record a video conference by employees or council members. I have a Terry, and then second Janet, is that correct?
Terry Rose.
Yes.
Kami Garner.
Yes.
Janet Andridge.
Yes.
Nastasia Raffiano, Robert Thompson.
Yes.
Council comments? Oh, hang on, I missed one. Sorry, y'all, hang on. Sign off, it's so little. Sign off on previous approval plat at 334 Littleville.
It's a bright plat we previously approved combining the lots, it just needs the Mylar copy signed on.
Okay.
Okay, next, City Council comments. Anybody got anything? Rob, Janet? Mayor comments? So I thought I'd address a couple of things because people have asked questions. So the time limit, I do apologize, it looks like this sheet's somewhere down the road. So the time limit, I do apologize, it looks like this sheet's somewhere down the road, I don't know where, we have three different times posted. We have corrected them per the Texas government law of 551.001. So we do have that, and we have set it at three minutes, so all the sheets should match when we post it on our new bulletin board on our new wall. I will actually make sure that it says three minutes.
You're saying that was an accident?
I'm assuming so, I don't know how it happened, David, because I didn't make those sheets, those sheets have been there for years. Next, for the city hall occupancy, we had the state fire marshal out, who came out on August 22nd, due to several complaints he received by citizens. We did receive several violations. I'm in the process of working with vendors to get these violations fixed. We did have a timeline of about 30 days that needed to take care of those violations. We do have a brand-new wall, that is what they're working on. Right now, city hall is set at 45, that could change when he comes back in, but he will let us know that when he comes back in. As Cynthia said, the library is set. Their limit with non-emergency is different, so there's two different limits that have been set, just so y'all know that, too. Once he comes in and looks at the violations at work, at city hall, and also the library, he'll actually give us firm numbers at that point in time. And then at that point in time, those firm members will be, will have placards made and everything like that. The police department, which I believe was not posted online, they did have some violations, we did get those fixed for the police department, and they got hot water, so they should be excited, because now they have hot water, they've gotten that fixed over there, too. Library, we did have a citizen graciously donate a brand-new shed for the library usage, and it is for the library, a permit was pulled for that, and drawings were made. I do want to greatly say thank you to the person that donated that on behalf of the city and the city council, we greatly appreciate that.
Was capacity done on the front part of the building? So if you have to go into executive session, do you have room to-
They don't do that anymore, they kick us out. They kick us out for executive session.
Yeah, we do not have room to do that up front anymore. He actually just did it in here, there's not enough room up there for us to do it up there anymore.
So, Mayor, with all due respect, we asked for an agenda item about capacity, so that this whole thing could be discussed, including the fairy tale that you told about Raines County.
Thank you, sir, David, thank you. I am doing mayor comments right now, thank you, David. Next, we have the cotton patch challenge, I want everybody to know about the actual, you know, traffic-
What about the deception, that you-
Stop.
No, you orchestrated the deception.
Ma'am.
Thank you.
You don't want to discuss your part, you didn't, you didn't bring up your name, you were deceitful.
Please, no, thank you.
You were deceitful, there's no way to run a-
Cotton Patch Challenge is Saturday the 16th at 8:00 a.m., so please be aware that we will have bicycles and stuff like that running through the city, it will have stands up and everything like that. We also have the high school bass tournament on Saturday, the 23rd, they start at 5:00 a.m. usually, Riley said they will be here, they do have several days, I think four or five, set up in the city, I know one's in December, I think one's in March, I'll have to look at that, please know that, too. Trash services, the contract was signed over five years ago by a previous mayor and city secretary, that auto-renewed in April of this year. I have actually got the attorney looking at it to see what he can get out of it, I don't believe we can, but he is reviewing that trash contract that did renew in April, I will let y'all know as soon as that happens. I also want to correct, I did have a citizen ask about the Ford, and it was improperly posted in the paper, I want to make sure that y'all understand, it was bought for $53,300. The city used 22,480 and 19 cents from grant money, and then 30,819.18 from capital improvements was used for the truck, and then we also had money that was used for the back truck, and this was not approved by city council. Somebody did ask me that question, I am just letting y'all know that. Next, the code enforcement company and contract. I did, my goal for this whole thing to bring that in, when I talked to Chief South, and then also some citizens, was to give us a police officer that was working 20-plus hours from home, doing code enforcement from home, I wanted him to come back into the city and actually give us another officer that was full-time here, so he would have been working 32 hours. That's one reason I brought that back. In the past, actually, mayors have been able to sign agreements, A.E. the trash contract, there's several other contracts that the police depart, or sorry, the previous mayors have been able to do. And at that point in time, it was a 30-day contract, it was no money spent to the city, we did, city council did review it, and did go ahead and vote it down.
Find the word temporary on that contract for me, please.
Thank you, sir. Then metadata and open records. So basically, it's the author data, data modification and file size. The person who requested the information did file a complaint with the attorney general. We were told and informed by the attorney general that the information that that person did request was actually the correct information, and he will also, or she will also receive a letter for that. Someone asked me what my goals were. My goals here are to work with each one of the city departments, to make sure that our water department has what they need, to make sure that the ladies up front have what they need, to make sure that everything is done legally, and that we don't have anything that has not been, or that is being done that is illegal. So time theft, as far as signing the illegal contract, stuff like that, is definitely my goal here.
Y'all can't even put the right date on it.
Last comment, and that's it, and you'll be asked to be your main, David. Thank you. I want to work with the city council, EDC, in planning and zoning to clean up Highway 276, set standards for future ordinances on 276, also to participate and work with the EDC, and the Spirit to, for our park recreations and open spaces, are some of the things I want. I'm also working with grant writers to, so what we can do about working on our infrastructure. We have actually, Rob and Jeff and Tammy and I sat down with a grants department and talked about a grant that would help us with our lift stations that we currently have. We actually did receive, or we are going to receive some money that will help us have a little bit on the lift stations. So I do want to start working on our, working on the grants to make our city better and everything like that. And then to review our city ordinances to make sure that they are compliant with federal and state guidelines, because we do have some stuff that are involved, and I would like to do that, too. And then put a five- and 10-year plan together for city hall and the police station to have them actually have a good place to come, have a bigger place that we can gather for meetings and stuff like that. And then another thing is to put a five-10-year plan to replace our sewer plant and maybe a new water tower in the future. Those are just some of the top ones that I'm working on. My other goal is to bring the city back together and to have a core settled down here, definitely want to see that happen. I definitely do want to work with the citizens, and work with the police department and the water department, EDC and Spirit, to make this a great, even better city than it already is.
Mayor, I always comment before you, I just want to clarify something, you had said, previous mayor, he's not here to defend himself.
Exactly.
But he, he did ask the city secretary, if the previous mayor had bought the vehicle she bought, did she, did they go, did she go back to the city council to get approval, even though it was in the capital budget?
Okay.
And the city secretary said, no, she did not, you can go ahead and buy, it's in the capital budget. So I want to be clear, because it sounded like he did something wrong.
No, and I'm just saying that the previous mayor-
That's the way it had always been done.
Yes, thank you, it always had been that way.
It just sounded like he were accusing you of something wrong.
I'm saying the previous mayors have been able to do that, that's just what I meant. So things have changed, yeah, so things have changed.
Just want to make sure that citizens know that he wasn't going behind their back.
I wanted to point something out, too.
So the citizens, so the citizens have their comment section that's-
You let everybody else talk, for crying out loud.
Because she's talking about EDC stuff and stuff that's her husband's experience, that's-
No, she's talking about what you just accused him of.
Anybody else in the council have anything else?
Can I say one more thing for the Spirit? I just wanted to let everyone know that Harold Chandler and John Lisby have donated a substantial amount of money to allow us to get the flag pole, the poles for the flag poles, for the flags that we're donating. So all we need to do is figure out a design, get that hardware, and- And so we really appreciate that, thank you, sir.
Thank you, John.
So some people can talk and some people can't, is that right?
We have reconvene for executive session. Okay, let's get David and Julie coming to late, you need to leave, y'all need to go.
Just go.
You need to go, just go. As I was saying before, I was really interrupted, reconvene for executive session, if necessary, we do not need that. Do I have a motion, the next is a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Kami Rose? Kami Garner? Janet Andridge?
Yes.
Stacia Ruffiano? And Robert Thompson?
Where's my guy? Hey, Jan, Jan? I wonder if you know what I-
Janet goes on the agenda for next time. Talking, talking, we discuss other than just the citizens. Attorney is shut down, she lets certain people talk for the entire meeting, not 10 or 15 minutes, but if we say something that's against what she wants, we're shut down immediately. It's not fair, it needs to be on the agenda. Okay? That whole thing last month was a fairy tale that she told about Raines County.
David, David, can you please get your camera, and we need to shut down the door, thank you.
You can't shut the door.
I can shut down the door.
It needs to be discussed, it was a polite lie, and it needs to be discussed.